I'd like to call this Celine City Council meeting to order. If you'd please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, or which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, council members Gearbaugh, Cybo Koenig, Rhodes, Roth, Tahar, and Dillon. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal, city treasurer Bennett, and police chief Rennick. For the rest of you present this evening, if you'd please sign in the back, we would appreciate that. At this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended. You have a new agenda in front of you, and the only change, or addition rather, is we have added an item on the discussion portion of the agenda, wastewater treatment plant odor abatement. And Mr. Campbell just distributed a memorandum regarding this issue dated April 11, 2015. So that is the one addition to the agenda this evening. Are there additional amendments or additions tonight?
Mayor?
Please.
Certificate of occupancies issuing?
We're going to add that then, Mr. Gearbaugh, after wastewater treatment odor abatement.
Yep.
That's certificate of occupancy?
Yep.
If there are no additional items, at this time, the chair would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Cybo Koenig. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we will dispense with that motion. And we have one presentation this evening, which is the police awards. And I guess I'll turn it over to Chief Rennick at this time.
Mr. Campbell, do you want to talk to the audience?
We will take no offense. And why don't you grab the cordless mic there adjacent to the television? Make sure it's flipped on at the bottom, chief. Little green light will come on.
If the batteries aren't dead?
Yeah, that's better.
Testing?
There you go.
There we go. Well, thank you. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to present awards to the police department. It's been a year since we've done it. Actually, it's been two years since we did this. Last year, we didn't do this because there was one award, and I do want to announce that that was Sergeant Bassel, who won the marksman of the year award. And this year, the marksman of the year award is going to be going to Sergeant Andy Hartwig. Andy's been employed with the police department now for 13 years, and he serves as one of the department's firearms instructors. The department has had some very competitive officers this year. Andy outscored the other officer by just one point and the third-place officer by only two points. He fired a course of fire this year of 96.8 percent. Andy's not here for some reason. I'm not sure why. He's on vacation. I'm assuming that there might be a little bit of a mix-up that this was happening tonight. So Andy's not here to get his award, but I'm sure that we'll get this to him when he gets back from vacation.
Absolutely.
The second award that we have tonight is a civilian commendation, and this is for Mark Valentine. And if Jeff Fordice, if you'd come forward as the director of DPW, Mark was plowing city streets when he observed footprints going around from car to car in the snow. He felt this was suspicious, so he contacted the police department. A suspect was located and admitted to breaking into several cars. The suspect has been charged with three different felonies, but the interesting part of this is this is the second time that Mark Valentine has reported suspicious activity, which led to an arrest. So even though Mark's not here, if we could give Mark a hand, that would be great. And our last award is a commendation, and that's going to go to Officer Steve Magg. So if you'd come forward, Steve. Steve's been employed by the police department for 12 years now. He's recently completed his emergency medical technician class and also finished training as a firefighter. As a result of Steve's advanced training, he was able to recognize a true emergency which almost cost a life. On June 18, Officer Magg was dispatched to a call of a semi-truck driver driving erratically. Steve located the vehicle, made a traffic stop, and recognized the driver had the signs and symptoms of a severe medical condition. An ambulance was called, and the driver was transported to St. Joe's Medical Center for treatment. A medical professional called the department later informing us that fortunately that Steve had recognized the issue, had it not been for him, chances are the truck driver probably would have lost his life. Steve, congratulations. Thank you. And I believe that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Good. Well, let me just say, on behalf of the entire council and the entire city of Celine, I want to congratulate those individuals who received awards this evening. And in addition to those outstanding individuals, we have many other of our full-time employees, our part-time employees, and some of our reserve officers in the back. Why don't all of our public safety officials who are here this evening rise for a round Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, moving on in the agenda, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? Please.
Good afternoon. Good evening, Ashley. Chris Frye, 275 South Ann Arbor Street. I think most of you know me. Some of you are my neighbors. I think of myself as a good neighbor. And I think of Celine as a good town that has good relations with our neighbors, including your. I understand there's a proposal for allowing heavier traffic to come up the street. I've lived here for 17, 18 years, and I lived there at this old house when the trucks used to come through. And the pollution, the noise, the cracks in my walls, they're not nice. I understand these are tough times, and that York has an interesting proposal to get funds that are difficult to get today for the roads that need the help. But I believe this could be significant divination to value both my house, to the Rudder Bucket Alley, Max Greken, the soon-to-be brewery, if we have this sort of traffic, diesel, air brakes, that I enjoy, but didn't enjoy for a couple of years. There's also, you know, I'm in insurance. It's all a numbers game. It's going to increase the traffic. It's going to be bigger traffic, more catastrophic results, there'll be more accidents simply because this could be more vehicles driven. I know we have a good relationship with our neighbors, and I know that they're struggling with trying to figure out how to find the funds. I respectfully would just like to see it not happen because I think the quality of my neighborhood has improved significantly since we got rid of these trucks. That's it.
Thank you, Chris. Are there additional citizen comments on agenda items? Please.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Ron Schofield, one of the co-owners of the Salt Springs Brewery. And we remain aware of the possibility that the road could be opened up to heavy traffic and hope that we could come and speak to help. We see this, and Chris made many, many good points. And from our point of view, I guess I would say that we chose not to be on Michigan Avenue for a reason, and we would really hate to see that traffic come by the business, which would be disruptive, nuisance, I guess is the best way to put it. So we'd like to have the council consider not approving that, and then again, we're sympathetic to the cause of the folks in York Township, but the quality of life and, like I say, opening up this business has been quite a challenge, and we'd like to not see Michigan Avenue come up and down our streets. We spent the weekend there working some late evenings, and I can tell you that it's an enjoyable place to sit out on Ann Arbor Street. It's a different environment, and I think we lose that, and the folks in the neighborhoods wouldn't be helped by it. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ron. Additional citizen comments? Please.
Mary Hess, Canterbury. I get asked how many streets do have restrictions. I live near Rosemont. I live near Old Creek. And Old Creek definitely has a lot of trucks going down them, and we have had trucks on Canterbury. And I get asked what streets have restrictions on them, because those are just neighborhood streets too. And I have mixed emotions on how our trucks are going to get in and out of town, but I think it's a very important question that's been asked, and I don't envy you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Please, sir.
Hello? Hey, Frank Hunt, 529 Woodville Drive, Celine resident. For 24 years, come this August, believe it or not, friend, mayor, you were just a child at the time. My daughter says hi.
Tell her hello as well.
All right. I've come today because of the York Township proposal to create a truck route designation. I think it's going in the absolute wrong direction for this region. It's not just a city problem. The region needs to deal with some transportation issues. I would like to see the city help spearhead something that's more regional and take a leadership role on that, so that we can maybe figure out where the trucks should go. It's an important part of our commerce, but absolutely, I do not think it's the right thing to do to bring it into our neighborhoods and bring it into what really is probably the most serene part of Celine in urban life at night and during the day. I would classify it as a safety issue, number one. And if you don't classify it as a safety issue, you're probably missing the point. I run all over the city of Celine, and that intersection is already dangerous. I can tell you, I wait for the white flashing sign, and inevitably, somebody will take a turn and try to knock me down, and I just pray that the people at Max will see me and bring me a glass of water and some other good bread. So that's my statement. I do hope that you can do something and maybe do some planning with York Township. There's other issues with York, particularly Willis Road and children getting back and forth into town, getting up to Dairy Queen, all those areas. I'd rather see us work together and address some existing safety issues rather than create another one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Please.
Cindy Chupko, President, Celine Main Street. And I reiterate what everyone else has said so far, but I'd also like to add that we work very hard to maintain the character and enhance the character of our downtown, and I think you all know that, and we work hand-in-hand with you. And recently, we've been working very hard with the consultant on the Streetscape project. And during that project, we've identified, well, actually, the consultant brought up and really hit home that, you know, we have a challenge with maintaining the character on Michigan Ave. because it's a trunk line. But our North Ann Arbor and our South Ann Arbor, we can maintain the character there. So while we really sympathize with what York Township has to deal with, and these roads are a big problem throughout the whole state, we really feel very strongly about maintaining that character on South Ann Arbor Street. A lot of events have been there. We have a historic district that abuts our district right there on South Ann Arbor, so very concerned about raising those weight limit restrictions on that part of town. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Additional citizen comments?
Hi, I'm Ann Cummings, and I'm a resident at 205 South Ann Arbor Street. I have owned my house at Ann Arbor Street for about a year this month, and we moved here from a big city. I have a young family, a five-year-old and a two-year-old. And the reasons we chose the house, and specifically Celine, was because of the character and the safety that it provided. And so by offering up or opening up the restrictions and adding traffic kind of changes the entire character and safety of that area, which for me, as again, a new parent coming from the outside into Celine, is unsettling. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome to Celine.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. My name is John Starewski, 9449 Moon Road, York Township, York Township Supervisor. I'd just like to comment with regards to some of the statements made by the other residents. I can understand that they would like to continue to keep their road as is. I'm not asking for a total repeal of the restriction. I'm asking that the weight restriction be commensurate with the bridge. That's not going to be bringing in big car haulers and things of that nature down through that area. And it's not that we're doing, York Township's such a big favor. Everybody drives down South Ann Arbor onto, I'm going to say, Celine Mylan Road. It's not York Township residents, it's not Celine. They come as far away from Grass Lake and from Manchester. I wish I would have brought the email I got from Terry from Manchester, who complained that the road was so bad. Now, I'm in a situation where the township just doesn't have the funds to do five miles of roadwork. At $1 million a mile, we would go bankrupt. I'm asking you to consider removing the 10,000 gross vehicle weight. That's just something larger than maybe a three-quarter or one-ton pickup truck that travels up and down. I would note, and I think most of the council members know, that the road north Ann Arbor, that's open to truck traffic. It has the same historic homes as South Ann Arbor has, and I'm sure that the council and their wisdom, when they opened that, they decided that it was in the interest of progress. I would like to encourage the board, council, if you will, keep an open mind and be considerate. This road will not only improve the benefits of us, the York Township residents, Celine residents, but those who use Celine Mylan Road as a main travel road between the two major cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Starewski. Additional citizen comments? Please.
Hi, my name is Gretchen Waters. I live at 5408 Austin Road in Celine Township. So I'm actually here not as a city resident, but as a township resident, and I think probably some of the feelings I have are shared with York Township residents as well. You know, the supervisor did make a good point that, you know, the road needs to be fixed. Well, a lot of roads need to be fixed. Fixing one road, in my opinion, and finding a solution for one road, is not a fair trade-off with losing our downtown. And I say "our" downtown very specifically because the Celine downtown isn't just the downtown for the city of Celine. It's my downtown. It's York Township's downtown. It's many of the Pittsfield downtown. It's a place where we all gather. It's a very important place for everyone, really, especially in the whole school district, because that's where we all come together. And I'm very concerned that the truck traffic would significantly alter our downtown and would have a very detrimental effect. I'm very involved with a number of organizations in town with Main Street, but I guess my biggest involvement has been with the Celine Fiddlers Philharmonic. They perform often in the downtown area, right on South Ann Arbor Street, and that is a tremendous asset, and all of the, you know, the New Horizons Band and all of the things that we have that occur in the downtown area are very special. And to give that up or to threaten it in any way, I think for the sake of rebuilding one road just isn't a good trade-off. And that's not to say that the rebuilding of the road isn't important. And I guess the last thing I'd like to say is there's also an important economic impact. When I come from Celine Township for those events downtown, I'm spending money. I'm eating at the restaurants. I'm, you know, having a drink at Max. I'm, you know, shopping at the stores. And so making downtown a less comfortable place to be is going to have a very detrimental economic impact on the whole community. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Additional citizen comments? Please.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Gervin, and I'm a resident in Huntington Woods. My address is 375 Huntington. I'm here in support of my fellow neighbors that reside on South Ann Arbor. And living in Huntington Woods frequently, I travel east on Henry to come up into downtown. And for years and years, it's been treacherous to cross with that being only a two-way stop. I've talked to David before about it, and understanding that a four-way stop has not been put there because it would back up traffic. So without the added truck traffic, it's dangerous. It's going to be a little more dangerous with increased traffic from Salt Springs, which we're very excited to welcome into our neck of the woods. And I'm concerned about the traffic flow when Michigan Avenue was worked on. I'm sure that Henry's going to take the brunt of that. There are children at Pleasant Ridge. Many of those children walk, they're within a walking distance. There's just a lot of issues. It's not just a one-time issue. And I feel that so many of the great things that give Celine that quaint character are just being given away left and right, and we want to be able to retain that. And I ask that you support the opinion and the voice of these citizens that have shown up here tonight that want to retain the quality of Celine. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Cheryl. Please.
My name's Demi Armstrong. I live at 227 South Ann Arbor Street, and we moved in there in 1992. And at that time, it was a truck route on South Ann Arbor Street. And I had young children then, and their bedroom faced South Ann Arbor Street, and they couldn't even keep their windows open at night because of the trucks going by, the noise from it. We live in a house that was built in 1908 with the original windows, and those windows would shake when the gravel haulers would go by every single morning. So I don't miss that. I was so pleased when it was designated 10,000 pounds limit. Celine's changed a lot since 1992, when there was, back when we moved in, there wasn't all the restaurants downtown, there wasn't the outdoor seating downtown, there's not going to be a beer garden, which is going to be there. All the things that have been brought downtown, the picnic that used to be out at the park is now downtown. So all those things have been brought downtown, and having those trucks go through would be very disruptive to all that. Just walking up here, my husband and I, we choose to go down Henry Street, not to go on Michigan Avenue because of the truck noise. And I know there's tons of walkers on our road, and they choose to walk it because it's a pleasant road, but being trucks going by in the morning, I'm sure they won't be there. And I'd be remiss to say I'm on the Parks Commission, and out of the 12 parks in Celine, five of them are on South Ann Arbor or within a block or two of South Ann Arbor. And if any of you've ever been down to Wilderness Park and sat on the bench and just enjoyed the water, it's like you're not near the city, but with a truck going by, you'd be sure to hear that, and it'd also be disruptive to all of our nice parks in Celine. So I really hope that you do not change the weight restriction. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Any other citizen comments? No, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Move to approve as submitted. Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Roth to approve the consent agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to the first of our two new business items this evening. This is new business item 15-84. This is Swisher listing renewal. This will be a motion to acknowledge the memo dated April 28, 2015, from city manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve the request to renew the Swisher commercial realty agreement for another 12 months. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar. Mr. Campbell, if you'd care to comment at all?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Tony Caparisi's here, if there's any questions for him. But again, a standard extension request, which staff supports. And I don't know if Tony wants to get into any details, there have been a little bit of interest here and there, but that we've worked on a few proposals, and we have one now that we're working on preliminarily to hopefully bring before council soon. But we would, again, respectfully request that council favorably consider extending for a 12-month extension for Mr. Caparisi to represent the city properties.
Mr. Caparisi, do you care to make any comment this evening, sir?
Just to reinforce what Mr. Campbell indicated, we have had some interest. Things appear to be, the market in general seems to be picking up a little bit more. Doesn't necessarily mean that the city's industrial properties are going to be flying off the shelves anytime soon, but I guess the good news is that we have seen that most of the inventory in the industrial market has been consumed in the past five years. Many of the foreclosed properties are now gone. We may be approaching in the next couple of years the point where we may see some specific spec buildings being built, or perhaps some owner-user-type properties being built. And so I think that would bode well for the city's industrial properties. We have had some specific interest in one of the properties in particular, and we're awaiting a response from staff and city attorney as to next steps on that proposal. So.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for staff or for our realtor?
No.
Appreciate it, Tony. Thank you for being here this evening. Any subsequent discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by Tahar, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We move on now to new business item 15-85. This is proposed ordinance amendment, annual appointment of officers and combination of offices. This is a motion to acknowledge the memo dated April 13, 2015, from the city attorney's office, excuse me, and to approve or not to approve the proposed ordinance number 769, annual appointment of officers and combination of offices.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt of the memo.
Okay, it's been moved by Gearbaugh to acknowledge receipt of the memo. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Cybo Koenig. Mr. Campbell, since we've divided this motion, do you want to go over the memo? And then we'll entertain any questions that council members may have.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You may recall, a number of months ago, city council, after a work session discussion, directed the city attorneys, Scott Smith and our labor attorney, Steve Gerard, by the city council to develop a method to remove the annual appointments of the officers and the annual, as well as eliminate the annual employment contracts, except for the city manager and police chief, kind of making Celine city government similar to other council-manager forms of government. And so this is what's been proposed that would amend the current ordinance that is allowed under the city charter to combine all the offices. And when I say officers, the offices are officers such as the treasurer, the clerk, police chief, DPW, city engineer, city assessor, parks and rec director, wastewater and water superintendent. Those officers, as well as the city manager, have been annual appointments by the city council, while on a day-to-day basis, those positions are responsible to the city manager. And so this would, by combining all those offices under the city manager office, that would become similar, or truer to a council-manager form of government, where the city manager has the authority for those appointments, higher fire discipline and those types of things. Again, in this particular case, which was asked and directed by city council, except for the city manager and the police chief, well, the police chief would still, with this proposed ordinance change, would still be responsible to the city manager position on a day-to-day basis. And also, as you see in the attachments, is that there would be a handful of changes to the personnel policy manual to coincide with these changes.
Very good. Are there questions for city manager Campbell? Do you have anything, Mr. Gearbaugh?
I mean, I moved the motion for the memo. At first glance, I was no problem with moving this ahead because I think there is some aspects of this where council doesn't necessarily need to be involved in the day-to-day operations and really the oversight of those individuals. From my perspective, there are some key positions that I think are important enough that the reason why the charter was set up the way it was was to make sure that there wasn't any concerns or problems. And from my perspective, I would like to see that we continue to do And from my perspective, I would like to see that we continue to do what we have done in the past with both the clerk, or with all three of the clerk, the treasurer, superintendent positions, in addition to the city manager and the chief of police.
Okay. So, just to be clear, in its current form, you would be voting no?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Mr. Rhodes?
I would say that I generally agree with this approach to move things over. In the nine years that I've been on council, I don't recall us ever not approving the city manager's request for either compensation or personnel actions. So, I feel like sometimes we're just rubber-stamping things. But I would like to see two, if this moves forward, two potential changes to it, one of which would be the right of an employee who has been told that they are going to be fired by the city manager to have some kind of an appeal process. I'm not sure what or how that would be, but we have appeal processes built into other activities within the city, and I think it would be only fair to have one here. The other thing would be, under the new policy for severance pay, it says exceptions to this policy may be made if in writing and signed by the employee and the city manager. And I would like to see if one of those happens, that a copy be provided to city council. This is sort of a current issue up in the city of Ann Arbor, where a department head was unofficially terminated, kept on payroll for a number of months without city council being made aware of it. And so, there's several thousands of dollars that were being paid out to an individual who is not actually working on city business in the city of Ann Arbor. So, I'd be okay if those two issues were somehow addressed.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any other comments or questions for the city manager? Mr. Roth?
I too was bothered by the severance pay, same as Councilmember Rhodes, as far as exceptions to this policy being made in writing and signed by the employee and the city manager. I think that information should be forward, brought up front to the council. I'm not sure, I'd like to have some protection that we don't have, that we have some checks on whoever is the city manager. And I don't want, we could have a possibility that they're going to make some agreements that may not be best interest to the entire city. And I'm also concerned as far as the amount of severance pay that is, or the length of severance pay, which equals the amounts for both the city manager and the police chief. I think that it's probably kind of an excessive amount, whereas a burden put onto the city.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Any additional comments or questions? Ms. Tahar?
I'm in principle in favor of streamlining and rationalizing processes. And I think that's an approach we've taken in the code review task force as well, trying to get rid of unnecessary overhead and process. I think also that there are enough questions about this specific proposal that it might be worthwhile for us to, I hate to say this, devote a work session or part of a work session with Mr. Smith to talk about specifics and implications before we move forward on an actual change.
Well, you beat me to the punch, because I was about to say that, obviously, we will vote on the motion that's been offered by Gearbaugh, seconded by Councilwoman Sybil Koenig, to acknowledge the receipt of the memo dated April the 13th. But if we were to proceed with approving the proposed changes, I don't believe that we have the votes to do that tonight. In fact, I think we're probably hopelessly deadlocked. And I should note that coming into the meeting this evening, and I think I articulated this to our city manager in advance of tonight, that I am not comfortable moving forward. In fact, my position is very similar to that of Mr. Gearbaugh. I don't believe that our current policy is fundamentally flawed, and so, I revert back to the old adage that if it isn't broke, don't fix it. So, it appears that there are a number of concerns, a number of questions, and other number of items that need to be vetted and discussed. So, it would be my recommendation, unless I hear objections from the dais, that I work with the city manager to make sure that ideally both Scott Smith and Steve Gerard could attend a work meeting to vet and discuss this a little bit more, unless you have objections to that, Mr. Campbell.
No, not at all. What I would suggest is maybe because of the dates getting close to, we need to do one thing or the other, right? For the annual appointments, that maybe we do it as a whole business item and just have the discussion. Because I don't know that we, because it's getting pretty close to try and determine a separate work session.
Right. Well, I guess that leads me to this question. Does anybody have any objections if we proceed with our current policy for the time being? I mean, again, we've been doing it for decades, so I don't see any harm in doing it at least one more time. All right? If there's no objections to that, we'll proceed.
Okay.
And we'll try and, again, depending on our legal counsel's availability, maybe have a work session sometime this summer.
Okay. Very good.
Lesser objections to that? No? Okay. Any subsequent discussion on this item? No, then it's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Sybil Koenig, to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated April the 13th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. And again, it's my assumption no one wants to offer a subsequent motion. Then we move on to discussion items. First up is commission, committee, and task force reports from council members. Ms. Tahar?
Thank you. The Arts and Culture Committee met today, and we are continuing to work on three collaborations we currently have going. We have discussed with Parks and Recreation Director Scruggs, teaming up to apply for the DIA Inside Out program. That's a public art display program. And we are collaborating with the Celine Area Historical Society on historical marker and another collaboration, which I didn't write down, and escapes me at the moment.
You've got plenty of time to remember it between now and our next meeting.
Okay. And I can also say, I'm pleased to say that since January, the committee has added three members. So, we are, we are at actually good working strength. We're very encouraged.
Great. Very good. Mr. Rhodes?
Two reports, if I could, on the, first off, the Environmental Commission. We had a successful e-waste recycling event on Saturday, April 25th. The volume was down a bit, but I believe that was more due to the fact that we were not able to accept CRT television components as we had in previous years. But those who did come were very pleased that we were there and able to take their old electronic gear that was no longer of use to them. Let's see. The commission members also worked with various elementary schools that same week prior to the e-waste event with their waste reduction efforts. And Pleasant Ridge Elementary School had actually aimed for a zero-waste day on Wednesday of that week. They came very close to that. Their custodian who worked in that area said that they generated only one quarter of one bag of waste, as opposed to the usual eight to 10 bags that they generated. So, that was excellent effort on the part of the young people and the staff and teachers there at the Pleasant Ridge. The other primary effort that's going on right now is the commission is evaluating the possibility of recommending or not to city council to enter into an agreement with a textile recycling company. And they would be interested in the recycling of clothing, pillows, couches, upholstered chairs, those kinds of things, which they would then take, offer to various other nonprofit organizations so that they could sell them in their shops, like Purple Heart or Goodwill and those kinds of things. And then those who, the things that are left over from that would then be shredded and applied to things like insulation for houses and some other things that they mentioned. So, their concept is to gather up these things, which typically just end up in the landfill and either recycle or reuse them. So, Environmental Commission will be talking about that at our next meeting later this month. And then on Parks Commission, again, in celebration of Earth Day, a red maple tree was planted out by the community gardens. And several of us were in attendance, and Mayor Marl spoke to the young people there who were kind of excited to be able to plant that tree. We also have a cleanup scheduled for this Saturday, May 9th, at Curtis Park, from 9:00 in the morning until noon. And this is something that the Parks Commission does every year. They select one of the major parks and call for the residents of the area to come out and assist with the cleanup, getting it ready, spring cleanup, as it were. And let's see. The other thing that, one of the other things Parks is doing in conjunction with the Environmental Commission is looking at methods to reduce the waste runoff from the Dog Park into Mill Pond Park. And I would like to point out that that's not necessarily just from the dogs that use it. There's a fair number of geese who come up into that area, too, because it's a convenient place for them. So, they're trying to come up with a method to make that work a little better. And that particular issue came to light last year when one of the middle school classes did an environmental check of the water quality down at Mill Pond Park, and they found a higher levels of contaminants in that specific area. So, that made us aware that we need to do something with that. And I do believe that's it, other than to say that Parks is also now at full strength with the appointment this evening of the last gentleman to fill the spot. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Are there additional committee, commissioner, task force reports? No, how about reports or other announcements? Ms. Tahar?
Yes. The Washtenaw Urban County, which we have belonged to now for four years, Executive Committee has submitted its 2015 action plan to the County Board of Commissioners. The annual plan has passed through the Ways and Means Committee on April 15th, and it will be considered by the full Board of Commissioners on this Wednesday evening. It's expected to be approved. And the reason I mention it here is that this year, for the first time, Celine will be a recipient of some community development block grant funds through the urban county, specifically $40,000 for facility improvements for Celine Area Social Services Building.
Very good. Appreciate that. Appreciate your leadership on that front. That's excellent news. Other reports or announcements?
I just have two really quick. There was a lot of activity in Celine this weekend, but I had the honor of attending a be it for a brief period, the Relay for Life, which was, the venue changed from the Celine Middle School to Hennifield. I thought it was well-attended, and we were well-represented by a city team, I believe that was organized by Clerk Royal, if I'm not mistaken.
Actually, Kimberly Campbell was the...
Oh, and the city manager's wife. And so, it was a very nice event, and congratulations and thanks to all the organizers and participants. And the other thing I wanted to note, regardless of what your position is, please remember that tomorrow is a special election, and that the polls are open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. And we have two polling locations in Celine, one at the Methodist Church for Precinct 3, and one in 2 will vote at Liberty School. So, please be sure to vote tomorrow.
Any other reports or announcements? Mr. Rhodes?
I just wanted to report that Renshler Farm Museum is open now every Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00. And it's fun. You should go by, and particularly if you have youngsters, because I have animals out there, and the kids always like that.
Very good. Mr. Gearbaugh?
Just to tag on to that, I see that our new roof is on the barn, so looking good for another 30, 40 years, we hope.
If there are no further reports or announcements, we move on to weight restrictions on Ann Arbor Street. As I indicated at our last work meeting, which would have been a week ago today, I am looking for consensus on this issue. Again, I would remind my council colleagues that if the consensus is to maintain the current policy, then no further action will be taken. However, if a majority feel that we should go in a new direction, staff will work to draft a corresponding traffic control order, and that will probably be debated and discussed at our next council meeting on maybe 18th. So, again, I am looking for consensus on this from each and every one of you as to whether we maintain the current policy or whether we go in a new direction. So, is there anyone who would like to begin the discussion this evening? Ms. Tahar, and then I guess I'll work my way down that side of the dais, and then I'll jump over to Mr. Rhodes, Gearbaugh, and Ms. Sybil Koenig. Ms. Tahar, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, there've been a lot of eloquent comments in the public comment portion of the period of the meeting. And I want to start out by saying I'm very sympathetic to the dilemma that Supervisor Stanowski and the York Township officials face with Celine Mylan Road. I don't drive it very often, but I have driven it. And I think that anyone who's driven on any bad Michigan roads, and there are many of them, is equally sympathetic, I would hope. And I think that they're seeking a way to do their best for their community. I see the problem with Celine Mylan Road as a symptom of our broken system statewide of funding roads. It's not a specific, it's not unique to York Township. And as sympathetic as I am, I don't feel that I can support making a change. As I said again, a lot of reasons were aired this evening. The ones that come to the top for me personally are two. First of all, South Ann Arbor Street is largely and densely residential, and I think that the current character is best served by not making a change. I will say, I live near North Ann Arbor Street, and I would love to have a weight restriction on North Ann Arbor Street as well, and achieve the same, the same kind of peace and quiet, relatively speaking, that we see on South Ann Arbor Street. And secondly, some of us, many of us recently, and in an ongoing way, have spent an enormous amount of time and energy and investment in advocating for pedestrian safety in our downtown in the context of the Michigan Avenue project. And it seems to me that changing the weight restrictions on South Ann Arbor Street would be contrary to that. So, those are my, for me, those are the two reasons that rise to the top. I will say, though, one of the comments that was made in the public comment section is also something that was raised to me in my discussions with fellow citizens, is the issue of the Henry Street and South Ann Arbor Street intersection and the safety of that. And though it's not really part of this proposal or this discussion, I would like to see us take a look at that intersection and see what we might be able to do to improve it.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Tahar. Mr. Roth?
I'm going to try to keep my comments rather brief. I can appreciate all the public comments that we've had on it. I'm not too sure how much is fear, how much is realistic, because I'm not sure how much or knew what the increase of truck traffic really will be. At the present time, we have a fairly sizable weight restriction that trucks could go through far as the size that they're talking about, so it's not that great of a change. I don't like how the feds finance the roads, what they set for the qualifications for the state to meet it, the county, the townships. I don't think that's right, what they set the rules that we need to look at. That road definitely needs to be fixed. It's a financial problem, and they're offering a solution for it. And I think we're acting out of fear. And I say, I don't have the answers of how many the trucks are really going to use. It's not going to be the semi-traffic that you're having on US 12, so you can't really make that true comparison.
Okay. So, just to be clear, Mr. Roth, you would be amenable to a change?
I think we, we're forced to make a change, basically, if we want dollars. I also think that if that should happen, the south end of the street that we have that doesn't have curbs and sidewalks, that could definitely be a good factor for us to improve the overall looks of our city and make it appealing. So, I think we're going to have, when it's all said and done, I think it's a lot of fear that I've heard, and I think that we have lots to be gained if it should go along with far as what the feds require us to do and not get funding.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Roth. Ms. Dillon?
I echo what Ms. Tahar had said earlier, and I just wanted to add that I think that further discussion and investigation really needs to be done before a decision is made.
I apologize. More discussion and dialogue needs to be done. More discussion and dialogue needs to be had on...
As to the truck traffic, as Mr. Roth had said, we are allowing trucks on the road right now, and it's whether we're going to remove all restrictions and what that entails, or if there's still a possibility of having restrictions, and everyone keeps talking about these gravel haulers. Well, if we don't have those types of trucks there, then maybe there is a possibility of getting funding without having to go to the extreme of the weight limits.
Okay, so you're unable then at this time to come to a position as to whether we maintain the current policy or move in a new direction?
I think we should look forward, look more into moving in a new direction.
Okay. So I'll put you down as a yes. Okay. Mr. Rhodes?
I guess that I am going to mostly agree with everything that Councilmember Tahar said, but I would like to see if there's anything we can do to support York Township's efforts to gain funding to improve that section of road. Perhaps there's some other way that we're not aware of yet at the moment. So at the present time, I would say that we should stay with the current weight limits.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Mr. Girba?
Being the only member here on this council that was here when that was originally adopted back in 1999, the controversy at that time was the gravel haulers and a lot of the other aspects of which were impacting just everything coming into Celine, because at the four corners we were having traffic, multiple car haulers and everything else going through town, plus the gravel trucks, plus everything else, and it was making such a congestion and an issue that we had to decide what we were going to do and try and determine how we were going to protect our residential environment, but also the image of the city. At this point, I still favor how I voted back at that point. I don't see a need for a change at this time. I agree with my council member, Mr. Rhodes, that I think we need to put more pressure on the county. The county is failing in its ability to try and address where I think there are more traffic problems. Celine and Mylan, Celine Mylan Road and South Ann Arbor Street are going to continue to have more and more traffic on it. And it's not necessarily that we're going to stop the traffic flowing through, but we can stop the type of traffic that's more destructive, more dangerous, and more of an issue. And I think at this point, the way we have it set it up is appropriate. Moving forward and trying to allow additional truck traffic to damage a historic district, and the only reason why I think the Ann Arbor Street is the way it is is because we had accepted federal money for it decades ago, and we continue to do that. At the time, I don't think we had as good of legal advice that we potentially could have had at that point to help us move forward and make that difference. We also only had two routes that were going north, so we had an issue with, Maple Road wasn't yet determined that it was going to become the major truck route that it potentially could be, but we also are facing problems with Pittsfield not even allowing to have buses on their roads, so that even we attempt to try and reduce traffic, we're getting pushback on that. So there's a whole regional aspect, which some individuals tonight mentioned, that we have to address. So this is a bigger picture and a lot more concern, and tomorrow will be one of the issues that will help derive what could potentially happen with funding. But otherwise, at this point, I don't see a need for a change.
Ms. Seibokanek?
Well, the first thing I want to do is thank the neighbors and residents for coming out and participating. I think when our community comes to forums like this and express their opinions and their concerns, I think we get a much better discussion, and I'm so glad to see so many people turn out. I wanted to just jump right to it and say that I would, I think the current restrictions are appropriate, and I want to concur with my fellow council members in the areas of the fact that I believe increased truck traffic in this area is detrimental to the quality of life that we've established in these areas, and we've worked very hard to do that. It is a predominantly residential area. It is a school route, you know, we have kids. And in fact, one of the people who lives across the street from me, I do live on South Ann Arbor Street, stated that they moved with their two small children, and what I observed over the weekend, as we all were out on our big porches and on our street, was the increased number of small children on South Ann Arbor Street. I could count five houses that have new families or families with new children, and I was really encouraged by that. It is fun to see the young kids, and I think maintaining the weight restrictions will help encourage families to live here. That's what we want. Our schools are phenomenal, and this will help us maintain the quality of life that we've built.
Okay, so it appears that we have some consensus. It appears that the majority are in favor of maintaining the current policy. I am comfortable with that. I should note, or should add to the discussion, similar to what Councilwoman Seibokanek just articulated, that we do appreciate all of those people who contacted us by phone, via email, who may have stopped us in bushes, CVS, or when we were out and about in the community, to advocate on this issue. I also appreciate the time that York Township Supervisor John Stanowski and the Managing Director of the Washington County Road Commission, Roy Townsend, devoted to this issue, in particular attending our last work session. I think I speak for this council, and I think this perspective is unanimous, which is we understand and we sympathize with their plight and the condition of that road. I also think that maybe some action to come out of this discussion and dialogue is, like Mr. Girba said, to think more regionally about investing in our infrastructure in our roads, certainly advocating on behalf of York Township for improvements on Celine Mylan Road. And as was mentioned during the public comment period and by Councilwoman Tahar, I think we probably owe it to ourselves and our citizens to have a subsequent discussion about the intersection of Henry Street and South Ann Arbor, and how we could potentially improve vehicular and pedestrian safety there. So please note that those will be items we will discuss in the, hopefully, not-too-distant future. But again, I appreciate everyone's time and attention on this matter, and as I alluded to earlier, since the majority are in favor of maintaining the status quo, no subsequent action will be taken at this time. Is there anything further on this item? No, then we move on to the wastewater treatment plant odor abatement. And again, I would reference a memo that was distributed earlier this evening from, actually from Bob Skoll and Brian Rubel from Tetra Tech dated April the 11th, 2015. Mr. Campbell, do you want to begin? And Bob and Brian, you want to come up to the podium here, because I'm sure there's going to be, well, I know there's going to be an opportunity for you to comment as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn this over to Bob and Brian, and just one brief moment, but as you may recall, council had directed staff to work with Tetra Tech to take a look at odor abatement at a wastewater treatment plant. So Tetra Tech did just that. Brian and one of their top wastewater treatment person at Tetra Tech that also specializes in odor abatement, they visited the wastewater treatment plant with Bob and staff, and they're going to elaborate that in a moment. We also, we reviewed, we had a meeting today, and Mr. Roth was represented on that, at that meeting this morning, as he certainly is on council, but also lives right there, where the odor is a challenge sometimes. So my thought would be to have Bob and Brian go through the report and some of the things that we've actually already done, some of the minor things, and some potential other things that maybe could be minor change orders to this Phase 2 of the project, and then see where that takes us, where that leads us, and potentially go from there.
Very good.
Did I miss anything? Did I miss anything, Mr. Roth?
Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Well, very good. Manager Campbell gave a pretty good introduction of what we've accomplished the last few weeks, and it started with a site visit by Pete Dowx from Tetra Tech. One of my colleagues completed a number of odor control studies throughout his career. And Bob and Mr. Dowx and myself visited the plant. We walked from beginning to end, I think, and made some observations. And I'll just go through some of the highlights that are in the memo. In 2001, the city completed an odor control project at the plant, and what it did is it covered the first few processes in the treatment stream, so that air could not escape, foul air could not escape, or at least it controlled the release of that foul air. And it collected that air, and it took it to an odor control scrubber, where the foul air is treated with chemicals to neutralize the odor. So, you know, the city, by doing that, is really quite a head start with controlling odors. And from our observations, it looked like those processes are pretty effective in actually controlling odors. We only observed a few spots of fairly strong odor, and they were in smaller areas, and I believe Bob has actually already covered those and prevented those odors from escaping. In general, it was our observation that the plant as a whole was less offensive in odor than most, or the average wastewater plant that we're at. So this odor control process that you have, the efforts that Bob has, we think are pretty effective, but that's not to mean that there couldn't be a few other enhancements made. And we'll go through some of those observations as well. So a lot of our focus was at preventing air from escaping tanks and other vessels, because once it becomes foul, that's what is objectionable to the neighbors. So the grit chamber is really the first process at the plant. That's covered for the most part. There were a few little gaps around some conduits and odd-shaped corners and things where a small amount of air could escape, and Mr. Skoll had the idea of just covering those with rubber matting, which we think was an excellent, cost-effective idea. I believe he's already accomplished those. The air scrubber itself uses a PVC pipe to collect the air and take it to the scrubber system. I think there is one, there was one crack that we observed in that pipe, and Bob has addressed that one as well. Maybe there's one more to follow that you found?
Yeah, that's been addressed.
Okay, that's been addressed as well. So he's addressed two of those. We suggested maybe look at that very finely to make sure there aren't any smaller defects that are hiding, and gave him some ideas on how to detect those. The real engine of the treatment at the plant are called rotating biological contactors, big steel drums that turn, and bacteria grow on them, and the bacteria is what absorbs a lot of the pollution. Those are covered pretty darn well. We couldn't, we found no defects in those, but again, that's something that could be looked at and studied to make sure they are airtight. There is a digester tank at the site. Digestor is one of the final steps in treating the solid matter that's removed from the waste stream. And while we were there, we could not observe odors, but there is a vent on that tank, and there's potential that when that tank is filling with water, that it's displacing air, and that could be foul. I think Mr. Skoll's going to keep an eye on that here over the next weeks, and if so, then that air could be treated with a canister, and that could be added perhaps to the contract for Phase 2. It should be a fairly small change, but if that's detected, that would be a good next The septic tanks, the septic receiving area, for the most part, does not release air, but there is a catch basin, so to speak, on the pad where the trucks stop and unload the waste. That catch basin is just there to collect the spill, and if it were to spill, take it to the head of the plant. There's a potential for air to escape from that piping to that catch basin, so one idea might be to put a check valve on that as part of the Phase 2 project. Again, it's not in there now, but it should be a relatively small change to consider, and it should be effective in controlling the odor. There was some also potential for odor from areas that, in operations that we didn't see, such as just the septic hauling itself. If there were to be a spill, a temporary spill, it is collected, but the time that the water is on the ground would release some odor. And just sludge pumping, removing the solid manner, the solid matter at a couple times a year, spring and fall, has a potential to release some odor. Those were not occurring when we were there, and Mr. Skoll kind of manages the time of those operations so that that doesn't occur. It wraps up in mid-afternoon, probably before many residents get home from work and so forth. So again, we think that's a pretty effective way to manage odor from those operations. So I think one thing, and Bob can elaborate a little bit more perhaps, we could not observe it, because we toured this in April, but during the wintertime, he thinks perhaps the odor may have been a little worse due to some pollution that came into the plant and affected the bacteria on these RBCs, made it much less efficient in treating the flow. So as I understand, Rob thinks his plant's healthier now, back online, and those odors have been reduced. So again, we think overall, the plant is better than average as far as odor. Bob's implemented a couple of things in addition since we've met, and maybe a couple more things during Phase 2 that would improve things. And there are more comprehensive studies that can be done on odor at plants. They involve things like sampling the air for chemicals that may emit odors, like sulfur compounds and things like that. You can do wind modeling. You can, you know, put the site into a computer and model how the wind moves odors around. And you can do public engagement, where you, you know, you poll the neighbors about when they observe odors and what it smelled like, and try to use that to correlate to plant operations and so forth. All those things can go into a more detailed study. I, you know, we can go in any direction you like, of course, but it may be prudent to do the smaller things that Mr. Skoll has accomplished, maybe add a couple of small items into Phase 2 and see where we are sometime in 2016 would be another approach to, as a next step for you. So been long-winded and...
No, it was very thorough. Before I open it up for questions, Bob, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do. We, as far as the odor at the end of February, it was not a little bad. It was awful. And I believe after looking at the data, the lab results before and after the event, that something like Brian had suggested, either internally or externally, came through and upset the biological portion of the plant. And due to the RBC process, it takes a long time to recover. But we had, we struggled with several of our limits over the wintertime, I think, because of that cause. I think whatever came through killed off the growth on the RBCs, and then that started deteriorating, and it caused the odor. After we flushed out everything, the odor dissipated quite a bit. It's never going to go away completely. It's always hard on it, but just looking at the results over the time, it looks like something had upset the system.
Questions for Mr. Rubel from Tetra Tech or Mr. Skoll? Mr. Girba, please.
With that statement you just said about something could have upset the system, would that have been something that would have been contributed by one of our companies? Or...
You know, I would say definitely if we didn't have all that work done. I'm not 100% sure. We do have an IPP program where we monitor industries. We have no evidence from our routine monitoring, but it wouldn't take a whole lot to upset the plant.
Yeah, I mean, it was interesting this year, because normally I noticed it probably between 7:30 and 10:00 at night, when it was usually the worst. And I didn't know if that was more to do with environmental conditions or what, but there were some days when you could smell it, but it was always usually about that time of night, and I didn't know if there was some automated process or something that happened at that point that would turn it on.
Actually, we had a second issue going on during a great part of the winter. We had a problem with our south side lift station, which is located on South Ann Arbor, and because of that, we had a bypass pump that we rented to put into the tank in case we needed it. That prevented us from closing the lid altogether, like we normally do. I drove through the neighborhood several times, and I could detect an odor closer to Bemis and the lift station more so than the plant. I don't know if that was what you're smelling or not, because there's no particular process that happens at night. It's just the weather changes.
Yeah, and that's what I thought, but it was just odd, it was strange at that time, and it seemed pretty consistent when they would smell like that.
Any other questions or comments from the dais? Mr. Rhodes?
A question on the septic receiving. Is there a hose there to wash down the catch basin?
There is.
And is it, do you know if it's religiously used by those who don't?
Religiously used? It's frequently used. I can't guarantee that everybody uses it, but the check, we're looking at possibly putting a check valve in. That not only is it septic possible odors from that drain, it's also vents directly to the incoming waste stream. That's why it's there. That way the septic could flow into the inflow. That way the septic could flow into the inflow channel. Unfortunately, I think air can flow out at the same time.
And that would help the egress, but it wouldn't do anything for any contaminant that was left laying outside on the catch basin?
No, but we're...
Somebody didn't use a hose to clean it up after themselves.
We usually check that when we close down, but, you know, if there's something on the ground, we'll hose it down. But religiously, I can't...
I believe we were talking about installing a different kind of a billing, recording billing system at some point for that. Does that include any video feed or...
No.
Video is not included in Phase Two, but the billing...
Billing thing is, yeah.
Video could be added as later.
Well, if it's a continuing problem, that might be something we should consider. Those units are relatively inexpensive now. And the small air filter that you talked about, I'm assuming that'd be like an activated charcoal?
Correct.
Material, again, relatively inexpensive?
A few thousand dollars.
All right, well, I appreciate your efforts in trying to identify things, and I think we need to continue to pay attention to that. The one thing that bothered me just a little bit, and I don't know how you get around it, was this terminating the operations by 3:00 p.m.
That's the septic receiving operations. We shut it down so it doesn't bother the neighbors as much, as well as it gives us time to process the waste for the next day.
The only thing that bothered me a bit about that is that we have a fair number of folks who are at home during the day, you know, and the population is getting older. And so I don't know that we can safely assume that the majority of the residences are unoccupied during the day. There may be, but I don't want to make that assumption. But again, I don't know what you do about it. Got to have some time period when you accept that stuff.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Anything further? Well, then, unless there are objections, I think this memo is pretty clear and emphatic. First of all, gentlemen, I appreciate your time and attention to this particular matter. It's of profound importance, and I think everyone up here at the dais takes the issue very, very seriously. On the last page of your memo, you mentioned that there are some additional steps that could be taken. Obviously, those come at a cost. If some of the, for lack of a better way to articulate it, small fixes do not rectify the problem. And so unless there are objections from my council colleagues, I guess my preference would be for us to proceed as recommended, monitor this over the next several months, maybe have Bob come back at some point, July or August, to give us an update. Of course, we will engage and interact with the people we represent and people who are particularly passionate about this subject. And if some of these fixes that you have identified are not successful or do not work, then maybe we can entertain the possibility of taking the next step. Does that seem fair enough?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Does anybody have any objections to that?
Sounds good.
So Bob, maybe I'll give it to the city manager, but maybe plan to come back sometime late July, early August?
Sure. I just want to say one thing, too. Phase Two doesn't spend a lot of money on odor abatement directly.
Right.
But by streamlining and making the whole process more efficient, hopefully, that will help limit the odors.
Right. Okay, very good. Any additional questions for these two gentlemen? No, we appreciate your attention to this matter. Mr. Roth, we appreciate you participating in this meeting as well. The last discussion item was added by Mr. Girba, and this is certificate of occupancy. Mr. Girba?
I recently was looking at some new homes that were being built on Spring Street in Detroit, and was amazed that, I mean, there's residents living in it, and Mr. Campbell explained to me that they were able to receive a certificate of occupancy. But I am concerned by looking at the homes that the porches are not completed, and they're held up by basically some two-by-fours, and the porches are not finished. They don't have a completion out of nor the steps. From my perspective, that looked to be more of a hazard, and I don't understand why we would want to encourage occupancies of homes which potentially could have more of a problem than without them being completed. So I'm concerned for whatever happens in the future in terms of some of our other developments that we seriously look at, what is the completion and what's acceptable in our community as to what we're going to allow a certificate for occupancy. When I drive by those, I just am really concerned that we allowed people to go into those homes at that kind of stage and they weren't completed, so...
Fair enough. Do you care to make any comment, Mr. Campbell?
Just a brief comment is, I mean, that's been the standard, which we've done for a number of years, depending on where the, where the, how, where the home is, as far as the status being completed. And again, one of the requirements is that the contractor has put up a cash bond for the remaining work. And in the winter months, it's typical when it's at that stage that the temporary certificate of occupancy is issued so folks can move in, because otherwise the interior is completed and such, when they have, relatively speaking, I say relatively being key word, but relatively speaking, minor work to complete the project, at least the structure project. Now, of course, landscaping and the yard and stuff is, you know, is additional. But certainly, if, you know, we could certainly have a further discussion with the building inspector if council so chooses, and we can discuss it in greater detail.
I have no objections to discussing the matter in further detail. I don't necessarily, I'm not willing to commit that I'm amenable to a change, but certainly willing to consider the matter a little bit further. Obviously, I'm assuming, Mr. Girba, you would be amenable to that.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective of seeing those porches the way they are, and the way that there's no steps on them, there's no decking on the porch, and that the overhang is held up by three non-permanent posts, it, from my perspective, if, we haven't seen a lot of new homes being built, and that kind of concerns me that if we're adjusting our process because we haven't seen homes built in a while, maybe we need to rethink how we handle our approach.
Okay. How does the rest of council feel about this? Mr. Rhodes?
I have, in my occupation, obtained temporary certificates of occupancy before, particularly in the, primarily in the Ann Arbor area. But those almost always had only to do with landscaping. The structures themselves had to be completed and obviously safe for occupancy. So it may be that we might need to look at our standards here.
Okay, you'd be amenable to looking at it. Ms. Seibokanek?
I would agree. I think it's a valid concern, and a little conversation would be good.
Okay. Mr. Har?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, Mr. Roth?
I agree.
Ms. Dillon?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so I think it's unanimous. So can you work with our building and engineering department, maybe identify a few times where we could have a discussion about this? Ideally as one component of a work meeting agenda. I don't see it taking up an hour, hour and a half, but maybe 45 minutes. Okay, very good. Anything else to bring up under the discussion portion of our agenda this evening? No, then we move on to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comments or questions to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record.
Mary Hess, our charter has a strong council form of government, and we had a city superintendent years and years ago. And it was city superintendent that did the departments, and then it went to city council. City council is made of seven. The city council years ago decided to have, instead of a city superintendent, a city administrator. An administrator would administrate what the council wants. But per charter, the laws are within the council. Then somehow it was changed to city manager. I have no information, other than what I heard from Mr. Girba, that it appears more of the responsibilities of the charter-given council is being given to the manager. And I think that then, and I could be wrong the way I heard it, but the charter still says that the council, Mylan has a different type of thing. We have strong mayor forms of government. Mylan, I think the mayor's allowed to fire, but not to hire. And there are different rules and regulations. But I would still prefer to have a strong form of government, as the charter says, of seven. If it would be changed, then maybe we ought to have a charter vote. The other thing is, when the gentlemen were talking about the sewer smells, and somehow some kind of perfume, I think they tried perfume about 10 or 12 years ago, and it was nauseating. So that was during that time. And we haven't always taken sludge. That was something that the city decided to do to make lots of money. And we didn't take in the residents going through the pumping out, pumping in. The other thing is thanking the people in the city and the work that the staff did on the Relay for Life. Mayor Morrow and, of course, Ms. Dillon, they were so good as far as the walking. I walked. And I appreciate that the city backed the Relay for Life. And I was hoping that someone would have had an account of how much money was made because it is a good function, and I'm very proud of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hess. I just confirmed with the city manager that the Celine Relay for Life raised in excess of $72,000, with approximately 1,500 coming from the City of Celine's team. So thank you for your comments. Are there additional public comments this evening? Any other business to come before the Celine City Council meeting this evening? No, our next meetings will be on May 18th, with a work meeting beginning at 6:00 p.m. and a regular meeting at 7:30. And that will be followed by our first meeting in June, which will be on the 1st of June, at our normal time, 7:30. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, in particular to discuss pending litigation with the city's legal counsel. The city council will reconvene into regular session at the conclusion of the closed session. Is there a motion?
Salute.
Moved by Mr. Girba to convene into closed session. Is that seconded by Ms. Tahar?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, ma'am. The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yes.
Councilmember Girba?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Seibokanek?
Yes.
Councilmember Turhart?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Rhodes?
Yes.
And Mayor Morrow.
Yes, and so we are convening into closed session then at 8:53 p.m. Like to reconvene into open session now at 9:21 p.m. The clerk will please call the roll to convene into open session.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yes.
Councilmember Girba?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Seibokanek?
Yes.
Councilmember Turhart?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Rhodes?
Yes.
And Mayor Morrow.
Yes, we are now reconvened. Is there anything else to be brought before Celine City Council this evening? No, then again, please note our future meetings, and at this time, the chair would seek a motion to adjourn at 9:22 p.m.
Salute.
Thank you, Mr. Girba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Seibokanek. All those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. This meeting is adjourned.